Strange that the tide fought. But I told everybody. Then again, if you want to have the actual study, show up at seven forty-five.
But it's kind of nice at the end, everybody wants to.
Yeah, I haven't done fish. Hi, my update is that I found myself. Yeah, Jason.
You're on HAC.
You're on HAC. So I'm just going to say a little word about how I'm resigning.
From HAC, not planning.
Not planning. In fact, I'm maybe the first individual on the planet to be an Oxford planner for thirteen years now.
So how's your class doing?
It was great.
They did a nice job.
What class is that?
That's when Dick was coming.
Oh, okay, okay.
But it's a flat-out elective one.
But yeah, that's.
I think you might win that one.
I mean, weirdly, it wasn't intentional.
When Sam said that, I was like, she's been here.
Whatever, here it is.
I have a team this year where half the team is stepping up and half the team is not.
Ready.
Yeah, I have that too.
All right, we're back in seven o'clock, according to our friends at Fitbit. So I will go ahead and call tonight's Planning Commission meeting to order. Do I have, well, actually, before approval of the agenda, Mr. Crueth had asked to be excused because he has a conflict that was unavoidable. So I just wanted to let you know that we're not being mean and starting without him. So I will accept the motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Perthridge and Vice Chair Rosenberg, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. Approval of the minutes, so any additions, changes, corrections to the minutes, or a motion to accept as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Perthridge?
I don't care.
Second.
Vice Chair Rosenberg with the second.
Keeping the wheels going, Dave.
Approving the minutes?
Aye.
All right, they're approved. Kathy Wyatt and I had six in a row, I think, at RTA. And then we made other people play. All right, at this point, public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. So if you would like to talk about things that are not on tonight's agenda, feel free to come on up. There's a nice pregnant pause, seeing the three people.
Yes, it is. No, I didn't mean to confuse your.
Totally on the agenda.
Seeing? For public edification, the three people in the quote "public" didn't move. So we're going to move on to reports from commissions, boards, committees, and staffs. Staffs. Staff. Ms. Webster, bail me out.
I have no report because we did not meet lately.
Okay.
So the big announce is that I do find myself unable to attend Housing Advisory Commission meetings, which I'm the current planning rep for. They're just at a time that doesn't work with my full-time job. So given that, I'm just letting the public know and the commission know that I'll be unable to represent planning at Housing Advisory Commission in future. But I believe perhaps, were you at the last?
Yeah.
So I will be able to hear the report. Thank you.
Same was for me.
Actually, the target of the last one is what's on for tonight, so there's nothing bad there. We're just going to get into it in discussion. For Environmental Commission, I wasn't able to make the last one, so I can't speak to that.
Perfect. Dr. Perthridge?
Yeah, I mean, we met as the Parking, Transportation Advisory Board, I think, in April. But we, I can't remember what our agenda was, not anything with, you know, I think staff will probably be talking about the pedestrian bicycle plan, and we talked about some complete street stuff. Yeah, I'm not sure what our cycle is for the Climate Action Steering Committee, whether we're due for a meeting soon.
Yeah, I thought we were going to meet around now, but I can look into it.
I believe that's the joint one with the Environmental Commission, is it not? Was that the only meeting, was the one about the SOPEC? That is my thought, but I don't know if that's correct, and also I could make. When the meetings go to quarterly or bimonthly, we just seem to lose the rhythm. So anyway, I don't really have much to report, so I'll stop at that.
Mr. Arbuckle?
As David mentioned, we had an OTAB meeting, Parking and Transportation, in April. Bailey talked about cycling and sidewalk connectivity in Oxford. And there's nothing really much to report, except we talked about a process for deciding whether sidewalks should be implemented, where they're currently not. So.
So I will find the meeting, actually, it's meetings, where I referred to that concept as Swiss cheese, having sidewalk, no sidewalk, sidewalk, no sidewalk. So I love that you guys are taking that up for selfish reasons. Okay, for HAPC, I won't be able to make it tomorrow, but it's a work session. Really just kind of honing in on a few things, but I wanted to let everyone know May 28th is Historic Preservation Day, and I'll let Mr. Perry speak a little bit more to the proclamation from council. They're also going to go over design guideline updates so far, and then just kind of refresh and make sure we're on par with council goals as they move forward on the historic side. That's all I have. Mr. Perry?
I'll start with that one, thank you. So for HAPC, our next big thing, other than the work session tomorrow night, is our first annual, we hope it'll be annual, Preservation Day, Historic Preservation Day, May 28th, starting at 10:00 a.m. at the Arts Center. And so this will be, the date may move from year to year, but it was an idea that our consultant had that's working on the design guidelines to start to kind of, since it's the National Preservation Month, and May is a busy time. Historically, there were tours, historic site tours every Saturday in May, and it's just made it hard for the community to be involved with so many things, other things going on in May. And so the idea of a single day of celebration was what they came up with. And so Tuesday, May 28th, or Wednesday, May 28th, will be the first one. And so there's some branding that'll be coming out and surrounding that, and some recognition of property owners who have kind of done the right thing, even when they weren't required to, to historic buildings, and just trying to showcase that unique, unique features of Oxford through some of the sites. And so that'll be the first one, and hopefully of many. And then on the, kind of the broader planning side, as Dr. Perthridge mentioned, we have a bicycle and pedestrian virtual open house going on right now. So this is kind of the beginning of a several-month process to kind of refine and prioritize corridors that will need reworking to improve the safety of non-motorized transportation and access to bus stops, improving bikability and walkability in town. And so if you go to thecityofoxford.org webpage, you'll see a virtual open house link, and there's a 20-question survey that'll be open through the end of May. And so an intern and I have been out in some of the more disconnected apartment complexes, just knocking on doors, letting them know about it, giving them the QR code that they can go and scan and fill out a survey, and also getting kind of anecdotal feedback too while we're out talking to them. Getting a lot of mixture of opinions in that process, so just getting the word out. I would encourage each one of you to fill that survey out as well. Parking and Transportation Advisory Board will be looking at what some of those results are when they start coming in, and giving feedback to the consultant on prioritizing where those corridors will be. Some of our main ones, maybe some other ones that we hadn't thought about. And the end of that process, probably early next year, will be actually some designs for, that can be applied for, for grant funding to actually make changes to, to the streets for improving the bikability, walkability, and access to bus stops. So we're excited about that, and that'll be a several-month process. And then for HAPC tomorrow night, like Corey said, the design guidelines is moving along, and we have a draft that we're reviewing. We won't be getting into the details of all of that tomorrow night, but giving the commission members an opportunity to kind of know where the process is. And then we'll talk more about that and that overall process in our work session after the meeting as well.
Perfect. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, so nothing, nothing additional beyond what Mr. Perry shared for me, but of course, on our agenda is item number seven, other business, the Unified Development Code update. So definitely eager to share with you all our progress on that, when the time comes.
I did have a procedural question. Do, are we going into work session after the adjournment, or would we technically adjourn? So it'll be a presentation adjournment work session?
We're actually going to do the presentation in the work session, so we'll, we'll adjourn when we get into the details of that. So, but we wanted to give a little bit of an update during the regular agenda item.
Okay, perfect.
Just so the public, whoever's here, whoever's, you know, looking at the recording on the website will know that it was discussed, but the work session will allow us to get more into that until after the adjournment.
All right, I just wanted to know how to wayfind that one. All right, so we're on to new business. PC 2025-03, 5234 Hester Road, it's a zoning map amendment for single-family medium to single and two-family residential, so R1B to R2A. The applicant is the City of Oxford, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn to public hearing.
So moved.
Dr. Perthridge with the motion?
Second.
Ooh. Wow, two more people and we're done voting. We'll give that to Ms. Webster for the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none? Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this item is a map amendment request. This is a proposed rezoning of 5234 Hester Road from R1B to R2A. And the applicant, as well as the property owner for this request, is us, essentially, the City of Oxford. The applicant was under the care of Assistant City Manager Jessica Green, who is unable to be here this evening, has another obligation. So essentially, just filling in for her as staff, presenting the request. The site area involved is 2.1 acres, it's currently an undeveloped site. And again, the current zoning classification is R1B, single-family medium-density residential district. And the proposed zone is an R2A, single and two-family residential district. Here is the subject property location. Imagine this would be familiar to many of you. This was the site that was under consideration previously for a cottage community consisting of 12 units. The city had acquired this property with ARPA funds. Here's a look at the existing land use makeup in the area. So it abuts commercial property to the south, Summerville Bank, College and the Suites, and Westgate Mall. But it's otherwise on the remaining three sides, surrounded by residential, including multifamily residential use over to the west. And the city also owns this small angled property at the corner of Hester and College Corner Pike. And of course, you've got subdivisions in the area, North Ridge subdivision, which is off to the east and to the north, G4 Lane and Honor Lane, as well as Redford Woods, Fuller Way, and Carter Court, which was a Habitat for Humanity project. And then here is a look at the current zoning classifications, as are found on the official zoning map. So you can see the R1B zoning applies to Redford Woods, as well as to Oxford Green condominiums, extending down to the subject property. And the commercial district along College Corner Pike is zoned GB, general business, with residential off to the east and North Ridge, as well as along Westgate Drive, zone R1A, single family. And here is a look at the proposed zoning. So it would be a property unto itself, zone R2A, single and two-family district. And the next slide is going to show the comprehensive plan. So it shows that the property is located within the suburban neighborhood character area, adjoining to the employment corridor. Okay, so diving into the site itself, here is an aerial from 2012. So there was previously a house and a detached garage on the property that has since been demolished. And then the next slide is just showing the most accurate estimated property line that we can provide at this moment for the 2.1-acre site. And then, as you may recall, this was the Community Development Professionals proposal from 2023 for 12-unit cottage community, which is no longer being pursued. But this proposal would have consisted of 12, roughly 400 square foot cottages. So as a result of this proposal not moving forward, the city had released an RFP and had several bidders on that RFP, and ultimately selected a finalist, which was Empower Me Living. And I'll get into Empower Me Living here a little bit later in my presentation. But as far as the request we have tonight is just to rezone the base zoning classification for the property at hand. And when considering a map amendment, there are four decision criteria within the code, and only one of these needs to be met in order to justify a change to the zoning map. So the four decision criteria, criterion A, which we don't believe has any relevance to the request at hand, is if there is an error that needs corrected, that situation does not apply to the request at hand. B and D, we find, do apply to the request. So B is the proposed amendment would make the map conform more closely with the comprehensive plan. R2A zoning district would be in alignment with suburban neighborhood character type. And there's also a number of housing-related goals that the Empower Me Living proposal would help to embody. And so for all of those reasons collectively, we find that B has plenty of support. Letter C, there has been a substantial change in area conditions that necessitates the amendment. There really hasn't been anything of that nature that's provoking this particular rezoning request. And then finally, D, there is a legitimate need for additional land area in the zoning district that will be expanded, and we find that that could also support a favorable recommendation on this request. So as a reminder, this is a recommendation that the Planning Commission makes to City Council. City Council is ultimately the deciding authority on zoning map amendment requests. So the next slide visits a number of comprehensive plan goals that are relevant to developing this property. These are objectives out of the Housing Chapter of the comprehensive plan. Objective H1, expanding housing options for all life stages. And there's a couple actions underneath H1 that address housing. Leveraging land and other tangible assets to address housing supply gaps by boosting inventory. I think that's exactly what the city has intended all along by purchasing this property. We have, we have land, we have an asset, and the intent is to leverage that to boost housing inventory, to address gaps in our housing supply. And then additionally, action A5, supporting developments and programs that address supportive and transitional housing. We find that this has relevance as well. And then we have objective H2, ensuring housing affordability and attainability for all income levels, exploring ways to incentivize the creation and maintenance of housing types and arrangements that fulfill community needs. So these all have relevance, and this is a table I like to frequently cite. So this is a table out of our Housing Needs Assessment that was completed in 2020, identifying the number of units needed according to rent range. So kind of the lower, the mid, and the upper. And a lower rent range was identified as a critical priority, with 323 approximate units needed in the community. So, and this is kind of the main impetus behind the rezoning, is that with an R1B zone, and with the cottage community request that we previously had reviewed, which was 12 units, that was able to be considered as a planned development because the underlying zoning supported up to 13 units. But with the, the RFP that had been released, and the bids that came back, much, many of the bidders had, had suggested what we needed was a, an upzoning to allow for additional density. So if the property were upzoned to a two-family zone, if a planned development were pursued, that would essentially double the amount of density possible under that process, from 13 to 26 units. So this is kind of the essential crux, the essential impetus behind why we're pursuing this map amendment. And then finally, I wanted to show you a map of the entire city, speaking to criterion D, whether there's a legitimate need for additional R2A zoning. So everywhere in yellow on this map is R2A zoning. Total's 115 and a half acres. And of that 115 and a half acres, approximately 113 acres is already developed or has already had developments planned. For instance, down at South Forest Edge, there's been residential development that has been planned there. So taking away all of the property that is either developed or has been slated for development in the past, there's not very much left. There's only a little bit of acreage at the end of Silverleaf Drive off of Kerr Road that is zoned R2A that is undeveloped and vacant. So we feel that this is plenty of justification for why we should add more R2A zoning to our overall zoning makeup. And I did want to just highlight, and I will disclaimer this by saying that a rezoning request should not be, you know, considering these aspects directly, but since this is public knowledge, I felt I would be remiss not to mention it. So our RFP finalist was Empower Me Living, and this is their proposal for the site. So the rendering that was received as part of their bid shows a total of 16 micro homes, each 400 to 800 square feet. And they are identifying this as a neuro-inclusive development that would serve adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So having family members living together with individuals with these disabilities. So truly a supportive housing development, which is what our comprehensive plan calls for. And I'm just going to end again with the decision criteria. So you have the analysis and the staff report, as well as the presentation that I've just given you. So I don't think I have much more to say, but I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Moore? I do have a question. Can you put the map back up, the last, that?
The R2A zoning map?
No, the one of the, the irrelevantly associated proposal, the last slide.
Oh, the Empower Me Living?
Yeah.
Slide? Sure, no problem.
So this is just process and procedure. And I appreciate you mentioning that, because that's one of the veins of my existence on planning is we've had many applicants come in and they're like, "Look, I want shiny thing, change this rule." It's like, well, if your company goes bankrupt, shiny thing never happens. Now we have zoning that anyone can do with what they want. On this, right now, the only thing that once we go out of public hearing we can consider is to rezone this parcel. If things move forward with the city, they rezone it, that PUD would have to come back for approval.
Correct.
Okay, the reason I ask that, and I do want this in the record, and this is not, not all the department leaders, department heads, provided response, and just looking at that at a glance, I see a couple things that very much would have, should have been commented on. So I just wanted to make sure I understood the process, that I know we're just talking about zoning, but.
This is just a very early preview, in my view. And I did condition the staff recommendation in the report, just having the disclaimer that the rezoning does not guarantee intensity, character, exact operation, as it relates to the planned development.
I like the reference to buy right, thank you for that. All right, any, Ms. Webster?
Can you just clarify what the status of the relationship between the developer and the city? I mean, you said it's a finalist, these people are finalists, or have they been awarded?
Yeah, so City Council has approved the, basically given the right to city staff to negotiate a contract. And then once that contract then comes back, then there'd be more details in there. Separate from that, there will also be a planned development supplemental. So if that contract is reached and agreed upon, and then City Council authorizes the signing of it, then there would be a development. And in order for there to be development, there has to be a planned development review, which is what Mr. Watt had just mentioned as well. So, so basically, what that finalist means is that, that was the finalist that City Council accepted the recommendation from the committee who did the scoring of the four applicants. So that's essentially all it is at this point. The contract has not been reached yet, but City Council has authorized staff to negotiate that and bring it back for approval.
Thank you.
I have one more question. So this would be spot zoning. So one parcel, it's not adjacent to a similarly designed or designated zone. So it's, it's bordering R1 and general business. So is, it conforms with the comprehensive plan, but is, is there? I guess my question is, so we try not to zone a parcel, a small parcel, or rezone things that are not adjacent to an existing. So we're not just going to have, like, in the middle of R1, Plo Plo 3, and an island. On one of your slides, you said that it conforms with the comprehensive plan. Is there, and I know, and I know I'm putting you on the spot, is there anticipation that as development for other things on Hester? Or the only, only direction I can think of is north, because everything else is general business, going south. Is that area identified as more density in the comprehensive plan moving forward? So like, would there be other zones, like as, I don't know, somebody buys, I think it was Fuller? Would, like, is there an anticipation that the zones would change adjacent to it in the future? If you go back to the map.
Not anything along those lines that I can recall that is embedded in the comp plan that gets that specific and that granular, in terms of kind of this radiation, like moving outward in terms of there being greater density along Hester Road. The comp plan just doesn't get that specific.
Well, the reason I had asked is all those parcels are already built. So.
Yes.
A lot of the other, like, Lake Forest and those, those are empty. So like, all of those properties are already built out. So I didn't know, like, is, you know, Honor and, well, Westgate's not there, but are those, like, would they be non-conforming-ish? Because they're, they're single, they're R1. So if it's going for a suburban neighborhood, the increased density, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Because it's not transitional, where there's more of the condos.
Yeah, so the transitional has identified a lot of the, what I would call niche residential types, and it's more so identifying existing character and offering some recommendations for those areas. for those areas. So, yeah, perhaps there's not a direct alignment. Perhaps the rezoning is more reminiscent of a Transitional than it is a suburban. But in my mind, in evaluating all of the recommendations out of the comp plan as a whole, to me, I think I can state fairly confidently that there's, there's plenty of support in the comp plan, even though the future land use map component may not necessarily imply...
Okay.
...an upzoning in this particular location.
And it's just a weird thing because most of these that we've dealt with are vacant peripheral properties. That's kind of why I was asking.
So, I mean, I just, like, I, just for clarification, the future land use map, we did a better job than in 2008, which we just colored everything gray, like it was going to stay the same way forever and ever. But we were relatively conservative, we didn't, the future land use map didn't project major changes as part of the comp plan process. Like, for the most part, it kind of reflected the way things were. But so from that point of view, I don't think that, like, I think there are various places for guidance. There's, there's the values of the comp plan, and then there's the land, future land use map, and I think we have to weigh all of them. So yeah, that was just a, yeah. So yeah, I only was going to frame it as a question, but I guess I would say that, you know, that the future land use map is flexible in the nature of change, I guess. I mean, I'm assuming it's designed to be that way, right? You know?
Yes.
See, he did get a question, so it was good.
Yeah, it's okay.
So, no, I just, I wanted to make sure, because I mean, all the other ones are literally peripherals of town, or more of an empty void in the middle of the city versus one parcel.
That's probably related just to opportunity.
Yeah, a lot of those peripheral, peripheral areas around the city are identified in that urban neighborhood classification. So, yeah, looking internally to developed areas, it's perhaps not as common to have that type that kind of implies that extra density aspect.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Moore, or statements that end in a question? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You are the applicant, so you only get one turn. Are there any comments from members of the public? If you would like to share your opinion, you have up to three minutes. If you come up, please state your name and your address, and we will do our best to let you know a little ahead of three minutes so that you can wrap up.
All right. Hi, I'm Mark Radlinsky. I live on 6203 Hester Road. I'm not opposed to this project, but I have concerns about, housing goals usually being pushed back past Parkview Arms. And I have, I have concerns about the safety of 27 in particular, the amount of flashers and beacons. Hester Road is very far removed from Oxford's new proposed transportation hub. So we're putting these folks in a neuro-inclusive subdivision without much access to public transportation. There are a few bus stops on 27, close to where there was a pretty serious accident about this time last year, actually, by the Burger King. We actually have been to council a couple of times, talking and asking about more of those solar-powered flashers on 27. I went, I was here in, I think, 2017, asking for one on the intersection of Westgate and 27, where McGuffey Montessori is. Another parent and her child came in May of 2019. They got an email back from Michael Dreisbach in August of 2019, saying that there was included in a project for solar-powered beacons on 27, and one set got put up. We haven't seen any others. So, you know, that's, that's a bit of a concern. If this development is going in at the end of Hester, closest to 27, you would hope there'd be thoughts of stoplights at Hester, crosswalks, making this area safer, some signage. I'm concerned about the character of the development as well. We also came here once to talk about what's now Oxford Green, that rezoning. And at the time, it was pitched to us as a senior development. This would be a retirement community in, in Hester. It would be mainly seniors, it wouldn't be student rentals. Well, there are some families, but it's also student rentals. So I worry about that commitment. Will this stay a neuro-inclusive neighborhood? Is that what it will be, or will it eventually become rentals? So that's, I, I worry about, you know, will there be support structures in place to help these folks out? Will there be enough police presence to keep them safe? You know, so, and, and again, the resale question is another question. You know, what happens when somebody moves out? If it's their house, because it's ownership, can they sell it to anyone they want?
About 10 seconds, sir.
Okay. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any comments from the remaining 66% of the crowd?
Sure, one. My name is Alice Aronz Radlinsky. I live also at 6203 Hester Road. Wasn't officially solid that this was a zoning thing, so I do want to just reinforce the fact that when the zoning was changed from what is the Transitional suburban neighborhood on Hester Road, it was originally a one-family house. We were told it was going to be changed to provide senior living, because senior living was an important need for this town. And that is not what it became. So that's my concern basically about adjusting the zoning for this property. Thank you.
I think you might have the record. You were a whopping 30 seconds. I would see if the other 33% want to participate, but their job is to report, so I'm pretty confident we're done. All right, so seeing no other eligible public commenters, I'll accept a motion to adjourn from public hearing.
So moved.
Dr. Prithrich with the motion.
Second.
Vice Chair Rosenberg with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, we are out of public session, so. Hope, dreams, thoughts, observations?
Yeah, I do want to actually, uh, you don't want...
Well, because they're leaving, I want to, because they're leaving, I want to thank them for coming out.
Public session just means we are the ones who talk.
Yeah, no.
But thank you.
Yeah, but if you need to go, but since you're here, I want to thank you for coming out. A, for sharing thoughts, period, on a Tuesday night, you could be somewhere else. B, that your thoughts were so constructive in thinking about this. I, I think that the change is always complicated, and I think you raised some things that like, you know, I mean, Ellie, your daughter was here talking about that rapid flash beacon, and I thought it was going to happen. Seven years on council, I'm ashamed that we've not made more progress than we have on public safety on the College Corner Pike. I think we have a commitment to it, but it's been too slow.
I'll help him wrap up for you. He's got six more months on council.
Yeah, so, but, so, but I really appreciate that, and I think that the, to think about this development, as it moves forward in the development process, we need to be thinking about off-site impacts. And in this case, the applicant might, you know, for this is the city of Oxford, but, you know, I promised to stay on top of those things because I think that, yeah, there are things that are related to this development, they're not irrelevant. And then the last final thought here is I think council is also really concerned that this is, unlike a private development, the city owns this land and is really committed to the goals of the project, and is seeking to find the right way to maintain the intended goals over the long term of the project. We want to see, for example, you know, people, the ability to build equity as they can in Habitat for Humanity, but building things about right, right of first refusal for the city, and, and, so anyway, your, your concerns about the, the long-term, Councilor Bracken has, has talked about that exact thing, so...
And the retrofit was development is...
Yeah, so I think there's a commitment here to maintain at least what the, whatever the goal is, is not going to be student rental. So, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Vice Chair Rosenberg?
So, what I was going to say, speaking of change is hard, because, you know, I respect everything that I just heard from neighbors of this. Honestly, that, you know, picture of the development didn't make me super excited. I kind of don't understand some of the choices, but, but that's irrelevant. What's relevant is that this could have 26 residences on it by right. That's what's relevant right now, so...
It wouldn't be by right?
Well, I know, PUD, I understand, but it would allow them to have that, that zoning. So I just feel like, first of all, it's interesting that you said that R2A is at the end of Silverleaf. So I'm well aware of the history of this property, but I'll just say, hey, wow, maybe Silverleaf is an interesting location if this didn't work out. Anyway, I also am a huge fan of density. So I guess, so I guess what I'm saying is, I'm okay with the density. I'm definitely going to look very hard at the development itself once it comes here. And also, every single thing that the Radlinskys had to say about safety needs to be considered as a part of any development, whether it's, I mean, I, I love market rate, like 13 duplexes, I think that would be amazing. But okay, that's not, that's just me, right? So to me, this is great. I just, that safety issue on College Corner Pike is real. That's what I have to say.
Go ahead. Yeah, I'm all for this. I think it matches our comprehensive plan. I think even regardless of the direction we're likely going with this, I would be approving it as long as it didn't create any obstacles to the comprehensive plan, existing rules and everything else. It's a direction we are likely going. We're going to talk about it after this session, right? And given all the goals of relevant commissions previously, planning, HAC, and our comp plan, this makes sense.
And just for a little bit of context, I was just trying to look up, you know, we've long had comprehensive plan goals, affordability, walkability, infill, that are very supportive of kind of compact urban development. And yet, we're really just now in 2025, coming around to updating our code. You know, I, I was just in Clintonville, which is, I mean, it was a streetcar suburb in, north of Columbus, but it's, it's a, it's a, it's a suburban kind of context. A tenth of an acre is the standard lot size in those kind of walkable suburban neighborhoods. R2A is 7,500 square feet. Our, our density is one-seventh of what most walkable communities would be. And, and even if they did duplexes here, you know, it's still 45. It's like four times less dense. So I don't know where we're going with our code, but we, we, we've said one thing, and our comprehensive plan in 2025 has a really clear vision about the kind of things that compact, sustainable cities do. And one of those things is density, and our code is just so suburban still. And so, I mean, I think, I don't know where we're going to go with the code, but I, I have to believe that in a year's time, absent this rezoning, we wouldn't be looking at 7,500 square foot minimum lot sizes. You know, I mean, I think we need to be looking at a fraction of that. Otherwise, we're just, you know, we're never going to achieve our sustainability goals or our walkability goals, our compact infill goals. And so I know that the zoning map describes this as suburban, but A, the comprehensive doesn't, doesn't link to what a suggested density would be. But I'm sure if our comp plan did, it wouldn't be the current R2A, you know, or R1A, or whatever. The other thing is if you look at the map, there's lots of stuff that's, what's, what's the other color called? Like, this was suburban, but, you know, the, the eastern side of North Ridge, Kelly was like that, just up on Hester. So this is not a out of character with a transition between the mile square and suburban neighborhoods. And, and just for the, and just the, the final point that I would make is that I appreciate that we're, we're looking at the zoning of an individual parcel, which is not always ideally the best way to go about it, but if you're not, if you're in the process of redoing your whole code, sometimes you have to look at parcels in, one at a time. And, and I would say categorically, this is not spot zoning. Spot zoning would be, yeah, it's a geographical spot, but spot zoning is when you pick a parcel and you're, and you're rezoning it for purposes that run contrary to what your public goals are. You know, when it's so clearly for the benefit of the property owner. In this case, I think it may be just a single parcel. It's a two-acre parcel, which is in the heart of the city, it's not a, I mean, we've got plenty of chunks of land that are two, two acres is a lot of land. And I think it so clearly aligns with other goals that I think it's, it's not spot zoning by that, by that sense. I mean, spot zoning should be illegal, and, and that's things that are not, you're picking out a spot, and it runs contrary to public goals because you're doing something to benefit an individual property owner. This benefits the public lock, stock, and barrel. So that's my argument about this. Even though it is a single parcel and the city is the applicant, if another applicant came in and asked for a similar thing, I would support it for all the public goals.
So I'll have to agree to disagree. Spot zoning has more to do with adjacency, and according to the definitions, nothing to do with the purpose or ownership. It really is literally taking something and changing it.
I'll send you up my land use law textbook.
No problem.
So anyway.
But, that being said, well, we're going to have to disagree on that one, because it also, spot zoning also has a lot to do with the, the adjacencies or the flow. So it doesn't, it fails to be spot zoning when you're extending R3 or you're, you know, changing R1 to R2 because there's something, so...
So I guess I would just have the record to reflect that the chair's opinions about spot zoning are his own. We do not have legal staff here to talk about it.
With all due respect, sir, I was talking.
But you're talking about something that would categorize this. If this were spot zoning, it would be, it would likely be not supported by the law. So if you're categorizing the action as something that you believe is illegal, you can vote against it.
Dr. Prithrich.
But I'm, I'm going to ask you to not characterize it as, as spot zoning, so...
Thank you for your opinion, sir. I have one-seventh of the voice on this. I would really appreciate if you would adhere to Robert's rules and speak when...
Certainly.
First of all, you're called on, and second of all, when it's your turn. You've already had the opportunity. If you'd like to talk again, you're more than allowed to. And with that, I really don't see the point of me talking anymore because I can't remember what I was going to say before I was interrupted. Does anybody else have any?
I have a few comments. So I, you know, I'm very supportive of the idea of this housing being built in Oxford. There, there are two things. One is, I'd just like to, for us to evaluate if there's any harm that would be done if we were to rezone, and then this particular project doesn't go through. And so, that's a question I can't answer. I'd like to see what you think.
I can take that one if you'd like. I think, I was thinking about this during the presentation too, thinking about the audience comments as well, and, and I think with city ownership, that probably would be mitigated. If the city ever decided to, you know, put it back on the market again, I, I would agree that would be a concern. That could potentially be, you know, something that you would want to pass along to council. When we do our recommendations to council, we will try to take out some of the germane, you know, comments, and put those into kind of the summary of how the meeting went. Council may decide to, you know, take that into consideration, and maybe put it back to the zoning that it was if it ever decided to sell it back on the market again if this project were not to happen. As long as the city were the owner, I think since there's additional processes in place, you know, there's contracts with developers, there's, you know, there's really detailed plan reviews, I think it's pretty safe. So, you know, if, if your colleagues agreed with that concern, which I would agree with as well, it might be a good idea just to, you know, that we can include that in our summary.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. Yeah. Yeah, and then the other just comment is that so, you know, we have this goal in Oxford of greater density and, and, you know, kind of moving toward a more, for lack of better word, urban kind of situation. And of course, that's very challenging, right? Because the town was not set up that way and a million things have changed and, you know, there, there are all kinds of competing needs for residential development. But I would say that if we go ahead with this, there's some opportunities in this particular site to tie this parcel to a more urban sort of situation, even though it's a relatively suburban block. But we see in your, your plan that there are very close commercial properties, right? And additionally, kind of piggybacking on the concerns of our guests, there are opportunities and challenges with access from that, that corridor on twenty seven. So that's all just to say that I think that as this thing gets developed, it's really incumbent on us to make it a meaningful, higher-density development. Because otherwise, it's just a little island floating out there. So there are things about, about trees, about sidewalks, about, you know, bike paths, things that could really make the higher-density community connect more coherently to the urban corridor or whatever you want to call it, Route twenty seven.
And traffic control as well, like a stoplight would really help to kind of normalize and, and make that more accessible for, 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 for the residents in that area.
One concern I have with that, I don't disagree with it, but it also, regardless if it's the city as an owner or somebody else, it is not adjacent to the property. So I think that potentially could be Pandora's box of somebody wants to develop a parcel, hey, a hundred yards away, we need you to do this. We've had enough discussion about whether people, whether developers have an obligation to build a bike trail or sidewalk on their property, so. With the city being the owner, the one thing we have to remember is even though they're the owner, they're an applicant. So we have to treat, you know, that pesky equal protection under the law. So I, I don't disagree. I just think it's, it's something that may involve other departments and other conversations versus directly tied to a PUD.
I, I agree. I, I support that. I have lots to say, but I'm not saying anything about it because I feel like it's a separate issue. And I have more to say, but I've already spoken. Did you have more on? Did you have any more, more matter? Yeah. I was going to say that our goals aren't really towards urbanizing, like that's an aspect of it, but it's just towards, I think, housing. We're in a national housing crisis. We have critical numbers that we see up there. On all the relevant commissions I've talked about before, we've all generally supported higher density to try to address these issues. And the good thing is, I don't think this is out of character for that area at all because as you described, it already exists like that out there. I don't think it'll stick out at all. And I also think that if this existed, and regardless of what the city is doing, even though I'm happy to go down that direction, we would, I would be happy to increase the housing there. I think it fits with what we want to do, all our goals and the direction we are like definitely going, I think. And so I, I don't think it'll cause any problems. I think it goes with the flow. I don't think it's out of character. And I wouldn't object, I think, in any situation, whether the city owned it or not.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, my only comment is that density is associated more often with urban situations than rural ones. And it has many benefits and also challenges, you know, so the increasing density just raises the bar, I, I feel, for a city and like I know this is, you know, apples and oranges, but you know, the city is the applicant, the city is, you know, welcoming in supportive housing, so I feel like we need to be supportive in every way that we're able to.
Alrighty. Very getting the impression we're done with discussion, so I will accept a motion from whomever is so inclined.
So moved.
That's a motion to approve, I presume?
Yeah, I assume that was the default.
I'll second the motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Arbuckle?
Approve.
Ms. Webster?
Approve.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. What?
No.
Mr. Prithrich, yes.
Mr. Prithrich.
Good night, words.
I was really confused. I was like, I can count to six.
I knew one was missing, but I didn't get back to you. Sorry.
All right, so the motion approves. All right, number seven, other business, United Development Code Update. I'm not sure, I think Mr. Moore, this is you. And this is a presentation, so we actually, well, technically, we have to adjourn to public because we would have to let people who are not here talk about, well, it says other business.
Yeah, it's not a hearing, so it's just a
Okay.
Other business item.
Did you want to just give a brief update and then we can adjourn and do like a more in-depth slideshow?
I suppose what, what updates would you want to share, I guess, for the benefit of the regular meeting compared to the work session? To me, it's the same.
Kind of the same, yeah.
It's kind of the same. It's all public anyways, so.
Literally, it's you, you till we leave, so I don't want to do this.
I do think some public presentation for those who are just watching at home who can't be here tonight, so like I don't know how much you want to go into, but I think the public in general might be interested in seeing an update that, that we can.
How about if I just give a verbal about why we got here?
Okay.
And then
Perfect.
adjourn and then do the, the full, yeah. So how we got here was we had our contract with McKennan Preservation Forward after the, the scoring committee. That was one that selected and contracted through council authorization. And during that process, we were very excited about McKennan Preservation Forward team. Over time, and the launch went really well, over time, we had a couple of their team members leave. And it became clear that because of how much time had passed, that we were so far in, it didn't make sense to go to another one of the consultant teams or start completely over. And so what we asked the, the consulting team to do is we decided to maintain the relationship with the consultant team and take on one, one big part of the project, which was to be the leader of the zoning code rewrite or the rewriting of the zoning code. And let the consultant team continue to do the historic district design guidelines and the historic preservation plan. So our own Zach has a lot of experience in that, so we're very excited about kind of taking the lead on that and using the consultant team as a resource to do research, do the graphic design when we need it, do the final publication. But we would be the ones that would be drafted, doing the code drafting. And so that's where we're at and that's how we got here. That's why we're here and so we wanted to have a work session to kind of give you a summary of some of the things that we would like feedback on before we get into that code writing, so.
Can I ask a question? Given that our staff is taking on a lot more and significant parts of the project, does that mean there will be savings from what was initially?
Yes.
Intended?
I love that that's where you went.
Yeah, it's important for the public to know that we didn't pay for something and that a third of it disappeared and we kept the same amount.
We negotiated a thirty thousand dollar reduction in the contract scope. We felt like that was a fair, you know, change. They accepted it without any issues.
And I would have that on the public record.
And so that amendment's been made. We did revise the contract so that some of that could be added back because of kind of the ongoing nature of the work. So the Historic Preservation Day that's happening, so a little bit of that has been trickled back into the contract because that was something that was not in the original, you know, reserve in the room and doing the different things that are needed for that. But it won't be near the original, you know, amount, so.
Perfect. That all makes sense, flexible and we're capable, so.
No, I appreciate you getting that on this because I know it's an H eight B C's public record. I know it's in the staff reports and things of that nature, so. All right.
I think that's all and we can, you know, you can adjourn if you want and we can get into, you know, having the summary of kind of the things we need your feedback on.
Can, just for the sake of the public, can, do you have a sense of the timeline of how we're going to do that? I mean, because it is, is a big lift now. And so do we have a sense of how much time it'll take, what the touch points for the public are going to be and that kind of stuff for us?
We just need to start having that conversation. I think we're just kind of picking up the pieces at this point and I want to inform everyone kind of where we've left off on things, what work has been done up to this point and just kind of turn it over to all of you for, for feedback as we, we shape the remainder of this process.
Well, and one of the things I talked to Mr. Perry about, and we were going to kind of go over in the work session, but tomato, tomato, was kind of to that point, the, the timeline is more flexible now that it's staff. So with feedback priorities, preferences, bandwidth, that's part of where I think, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, but how I understand it is part of the work session really is for you to be able to share with the commission kind of a benchmark of where we're at. But also get feedback of things that do more, do less, do this, and then from there, what I anticipated was we would have an idea of an adjusted timeframe or, or any, I don't know why, adjustments, because we were really functioning on a calendar with the consultants doing a different part of the lift, so.
Yes.
I, I kind of envisioned part of the work session of us being able to, and I think we've shared this before, like in H eight B C, you can have a pre-application so somebody can come in and say, hey, I got a crazy idea about X property before we spend all the time, resources and everything, what are your thoughts? And it's more of an open, non-committal conversation. And obviously it's internal with staff, so it's a little different, but that's kind of how I envisioned part of it. Because you might have ideas going in of a timeline and then you have an epiphany or a huge observation that may impact it. It's kind of how I saw it.
Yeah, yes, I think that's well said.
All right. I will gleefully accept a motion to adjourn. So moved?
Second.
Got a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and for the record, we're adjourning, but in our abundance of free time, we're going to stick around and do a work session. So technically, the recording stops.
Do you want to set up in a roundtable or?
That's typically what we.